Evening and welcome to the City Council of East Hampton's Wednesday, September 3rd meeting. We'll start with the roll call.
Salem Derby.
President.
Dan Hagan.
President.
Jennifer Hayes.
Here.
James Kuzinski.
Here.
Joe McCoy.
Dan Riss.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
Joy Winnie.
Here.
Nathan Ziegler.
President.
Thank you. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a motion to approve the minutes of August 6th, please. Have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining?
Abstention.
One abstention. Thank you. Public speak time. Is there anyone here to speak to the council on any item that is not on the public hearing agenda? Seeing none, we'll continue. I have no communications unless the clerk does from elected officials, boards, or correspondents. Nothing? Okay. Mayor Cager, if you would?
Good evening. I'd just like to mention a couple of things. You've probably noticed some road improvements, especially on the Glyndale-Loudville area and then over on the Line Street area. One is obviously a new intersection and one is maintenance. So we are getting to the point where we're actually trying to maintain our roads in the Line Street area. And I really thank people. I know it's difficult when it goes down to one lane or sometimes they actually have to close the road. So I understand people's frustration, but in the meantime, you've got to admit, it is great. And I know especially on the Glyndale-Loudville area, that is just smooth. And, you know, while things are under construction, we really appreciate your patience. And if you have any questions, don't hesitate to call my office or the DPW office. We'll always give you updates. And just one little other thing, an update. I've been approached by one of the seniors at the East Hampton High School. He wants to do an internship in my office. So you might see him coming from meetings to meetings. And it's something, it sounds really exciting. His name is Brian?
Delaney.
Yes, I know. Everybody knows Brian Delaney. He's a member of the Students Against Destructive Decision. So I'm very excited. And so we've had a couple of meetings on what he'll be doing. And I think the main thing he's going to be focusing on is actually getting the word out of all the really positive, unbelievable, wonderful things that are going on in our community and in our schools. So he's excited to have him. So you'll probably be seeing him around and stop by. Probably about one hour, one period a day. So sometimes it'll be one hour and then sometimes it might be like 80 minutes.
Yeah, 84 minutes.
Yeah. So please, if you happen to be around at that time of the day, stop in and say hi to him. Thank you.
So any councilors have any questions for the mayor on any topic?
No.
Thank you, Mayor. Reports from standing committees. As the Rules and Government Relations Chair, there is no report. Finance. Counselor Hagan?
Yes, finance, first matter. I'd like to ask for a 90-day extension on the review of elected salaries and stipends. Hopefully we won't need that much, but I just soon ask for it, which we have to have done by the end of the year. So moved.
That's a motion, second. We have a motion to extend the review of elected salaries on the Finance Committee's agenda. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Thank you. Continue, sir.
The next meeting of the Finance Committee will be September 10th at 6:00 p.m. in Room 1. Also, currently on our agenda are three items that will be taken up later tonight at the public hearings, which is the football field appraisal and survey of Parsons Street School and repairs to a highway equipment loader. And that concludes at this time. And there is a couple of items of new business I can do now, or?
We'll do them when we get there.
They're okay.
Public safety. Counselor Hayes?
We met recently. We are going to remove without prejudice the Kingsbury Way-Bayberry Drive and Birchwood Drive. They don't think they're going to be ready for a while. So I'd just like to get that removed from the agenda.
That's a form of a motion. Have a second, please. We have a second. Do we have any discussion on removing the Kingsbury Way-Bayberry Drive from our agenda? Let me ask a question.
Sure.
We started this because we're concerned about the law that says we're not supposed to be plowing on accepted streets. And I'm just curious, does this change anything? Are we going to have a problem come winter because streets aren't accepted?
I don't believe so.
No? Okay. That's what I thought I'd ask, because I thought that's why we were doing it. All right. Any other discussion or questions?
I just, I think what we, you know, we're in committee and we're doing a whole revamp, you know, thanks to the chair. We're doing a whole revamp of that road acceptance. We are under the gun a little bit with winter coming. You know, we're hoping we can come up with a formalized plan by that time. If not, I guess we would have to possibly get a review by the city solicitor as long as we're still in compliance or there's some other way we can move forward. But that would be our only option. Hopefully, we're going to get the process done. We've been moving forward every month with a couple of meetings.
And to speak to that, our next meeting time is to be determined. We'll figure that out this week, because we have a meeting actually more frequently to get the street protocols done.
We still have an item on the floor that is removing Kingsbury Way from the agenda. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Excuse me?
I was just curious why, again, with winter coming, as you're saying, you're not considering a 90-day extension. I know there's been multiple extensions, but just to keep it on the agenda for consideration versus?
It was a request from the developer because they don't think they're going to be done. They want to keep it off the agenda until they actually come and formally request that we do it as an acceptance. So it'd be good, because we're hoping we can use that as kind of, you know, our first test of the new procedure when they do come and ask for it to be accepted.
If I could ask, do they have a bond that's leveraging this at all?
I don't believe they do for that one.
That's an old one, right.
Yeah, because it's an older one.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? This is on removing this from the agenda. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining.
So, like I said, our next meeting is to be determined. And then Willow Circle and Autumn Drive, I received a, I can talk about this at the public hearing thing?
Yeah, let's do it at a public hearing. I assume you may have to continue it again, but we'll talk about it.
And this concludes for public safety.
Appointment, Counselor Winnie?
Counselor Winnie? I'm sorry, I missed you, Counselor Winnie.
Can you put an extension? Do we need an extension on the Willow Drive or we're good to 10-313?
Yeah, we do.
I was going to do it at a public hearing, but?
Oh, okay.
I mean?
You should extend it now.
Okay. So let's try and make a public hearing for that.
No, no.
No, no, extension.
Extend the time on it for 90 days.
Extend it for another 90 days on the agenda? Okay.
That's a second. So we have a request to extend the Willow Circle and Autumn Drive agenda item for 90 more days. Do we have any discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Appointments, Counselor Winnie?
No report tonight. Thank you.
Ordinants, Counselor Derby?
Mr. President, our next meeting is going to be September 10th, 6:00 p.m. here. I'm not exactly sure which room yet. And we're going to be reviewing the taxi cab business at One Lovefield Street. There's a couple of outstanding issues we need to get resolved. So I'm hoping to finalize that shortly. That concludes.
And when that comes forward, that doesn't need a public hearing. That's just called out of committee.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Property, Counselor Ziegler?
No report this evening. Thank you.
I'm at a loss as to who's the chair of the Ad Hoc Committee.
That's me.
All right, Counselor Derby?
We met August 19th, where we were able to review quite a bit of information that was gathered. A lot of history, very interesting history. There was a vote taken, and so that should be coming to us very soon.
Okay.
Yes, 17th.
Just so people listening would know, and all of you, we're talking about the naming of the varsity soccer fields. Thought you might be interested. Okay, if that concludes, no old business, new business. The zoning and the requests from the planning department, Counselor Derby, would you move those to committee?
Yes, can I please move those two items to committee?
Inform.
And the planning board. Inform a motion.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion to move the zoning ordinance amendment to the planning board and to committee, and the request from the planning department to endorse the city's housing production plan to committee. Do we have any further discussion?
Do they have them together or separate?
Let's vote on them separately. Then we'll start with the zoning ordinance amendment from the planning to ordinance.
To ordinance.
To ordinance and to the planning board. Correct? Do we have any other discussion on this one? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now the request from the planning department to endorse the city's housing plan. Any discussion?
No motion.
Okay. Would you, we make?
So moved.
Okay.
Somebody say something.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to move the request from the planning department to endorse the city's housing production plan to committee, just to ordinance. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Counselor Ha, I'm sorry, Counselor Hagan, you're up. Three supplemental appropriations.
Three supplemental appropriations. I'll do a first reading. The first appropriation is dated August 28th, 2014. The request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $13,418.45 to be appropriated from the water reserve fund in the amount of $4,030.15 and the sewer wastewater reserve fund in the amount of $9,388.30 and appropriated to sewer salaries $3,759.99, wastewater salaries $5,628.31, and water salaries $4,030.15. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funds for DPW employee contracts A and DPW supervisor contract B. Second, I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion to move the supplemental appropriation to committee. Do we have any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Continue, sir.
The second item is also a supplemental appropriation. I'll do a first reading. This is dated August 25th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $40,000 to be appropriated from stabilization in that amount and appropriated to the fire department truck fund for FY 2015, $40,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to provide funds to replace a 1999 one-half-ton, three-door extended cab with a half-ton quad cab truck for the fire department. I'll make that in the form of a motion to be sent to Finance.
Second.
We have a motion for the requested amount for a new, I believe it's a pickup truck for the fire department. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining.
With regard to this same appropriation, I'd like to request a public hearing because this is the only four-wheel drive the fire department has. So I think it should be moved at our next subcommittee meeting, or at least looked into whether we're going to fund it or not at our next subcommittee meeting. So I'd ask for a public hearing on this matter for the September, I believe it's 17th, meeting.
That's a motion.
That's a motion.
We have a motion, a second, to set a public hearing for the $40,000 supplemental appropriation. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. Thank you.
Final supplemental appropriation tonight is dated August 26th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $256,000 to be appropriated from CPA historic preservation account, $88,265.91, CPA undesignated fund account, $167,739.09, and appropriated to the old town hall improvements in the amount of $256,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to fund improvements to the town hall for the recreation of historically appropriate exterior doors, restoration of the first-floor lobby and corridor, and rehabilitation of restrooms.
Second. We have a motion to send to committee a supplemental appropriation for a request from the CPA for $256,000 for improvements to this town hall historic building, its lobby, et cetera. Any discussion? I would like to say, I have been waiting for this for years, and I am thrilled that we finally have a plan to make that beautiful, old historic building, or probably our most historic building, improved. And I'm glad to see it come forward. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining. That concludes new business. I would like to motion open a public hearing.
So moved.
Motion open public hearings.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Counselor Hagan, you're up for all three.
Okay. I'll do a second reading on our first public hearing tonight. This is a supplemental appropriation dated June 18th, 2014. Request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $279,508 to be appropriated from the CPA undesignated fund balance, $279,508, and appropriated to the White Brook Middle School in that amount, $279,508. The amount, excuse me, the amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to fund construction of a new football field at White Brook Middle School. I know there's several members here, which we'll call up, but just to give a quick overview, this came to CPA and I left for all the members a printout with all the specs, the cost, given the large size of the appropriation, which if you have any questions in there, I'm sure myself or one of the members in the audience or the mayor could clarify. This goes back, as you can see from the application, it goes way back to May of 2013, when the Friends of Football, along with the school department, came forward with this plan to improve the football field. We already have appropriated out of this total project, $25,000 for the site design. And this is the culmination of that design to actually construct the field. And we've had several hearings in front of the CPA and then several hearings in front of the subcommittee, but I think it would be of value to have maybe?
A man from Mr. Duchet, if you would explain the project to the councilors.
I stand up here.
Uh huh. And please state your name for the record.
My name is Tom Hogan. I'm a registered professional civil engineer with Duchet.
Why don't you first go to the microphone, because we have people watching TV.
My name is Tom Hogan. I'm a registered professional civil engineer with Duchet and Associates in North Hampton. Consulting engineer on behalf of the East Hampton School Department. We've been working with, I'm also a volunteer with the East Hampton Friends of Football, youth football organization here in East Hampton. We've been working probably more like a year and a half on ideas on how to address some of the drainage and water standing and poor grading conditions at the football field at the White Brook Middle School. It's our only public football field in the city. So we've been working hand-in-hand with the CPA committee through multiple iterations of our application and have engaged in a very meaningful and well-timed process with them. The idea is, in essence, to regrade the soils that are at the field, to take out some of the existing drainage features that have failed over time, replace those, and rebuild and resurface the field. That's the extent of the work that we're looking to accomplish. We're permitted with the Conservation Commission to do the work and have added some enhancements to the environmental stormwater discharges that exist there today. I don't know if there's, we've engaged services, a professional land surveying firm, wetlands consultant, and soil scientist to help us with the cross-sections and the specifications for this work, which we believe is now ready for construction.
Just so the people on TV and the residents here will know, when is your intended completion date when it's ready for football? I assume a year from now. Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So we'll start seeding or whatever, sotting in the spring, but no football until the fall? No use of the?
That's the idea, right.
Counselor Hagan, would you also like to mention that the Friends of Football, I think, are contributing? I just couldn't find the figure here.
Sure. I know we have one, maybe you can talk. I know they've done some in-kind work and also are contributing a dollar amount too, if you'd also?
Why don't you stay up also, sir, in case there's questions?
So my name is Amy Gaiet, and I am the president of, excuse me, East Hampton Friends of Football. We have raised $20,000 to put towards this endeavor. But much, much thanks to the East Hampton Savings Bank, which gave us a large donation, the team selling calendars, parents going to golf tournaments, everything. So we've really worked hard and worked really well with Tom and the CPA to get this, get this project going. So.
Counselors have any questions for either?
Just one. And Amy, in addition to that, also, in coordination with the school department, you, the Friends of Football helped maintain that field, correct?
We do, yes.
You put your sweat equity and I guess some money for fertilizers and all that in also.
Correct. We actually pay a landscaping company to maintain it currently. Any work that's been done on it in the years past, the irrigation system that is there now was paid for by us. The scoreboard was donated by our efforts years ago when it was first erected. The whole field was put together by volunteers 15-plus years ago when the program started. The snack shack that's there was put together by donations gathered by the East Hampton Friends of Football. So essentially, the bleachers that are there, we paid for. So we have a very vested interest in it.
Excellent. As I understand it, for the other councilors, the primary maintenance going forward will be the school department, because it is school department property. I'm correct on that? Okay. So that's kind of out of your hands after this is done. I don't know, cutting grass if that's you or not, but whatever. Okay. Any other questions, Counselor?
In the subcommittee, the finance subcommittee, it came to my attention that it wasn't just the varsity who were using this field. It's a JV. Would you tell the public?
Sure.
That was important to me.
It is.
In helping me make my decision on this subject.
It is the only, as Tom, Mr. Hogan, said, it's the only football field in town. There's a youth program that plays on that and they have?
How old are the?
They start at third grade. So our Pee Wee team is third and fourth graders. Then we have fifth and sixth graders, seventh and eighth graders. They all play. So that's three games when we're home. That's three games that are played on that field. Then there's a JV program and then there's a varsity program as well. So we have five teams that play on one field. One field that's seen a lot, its better days are gone. And then in addition to that, there are Pee Wee cheerleaders, junior cheerleaders, and senior cheerleaders, and high school cheerleaders as well. So it's more than just, you know, a handful of kids that you see here. It's quite a few people.
Excellent. Anything else from councilors? Do any of the high school personnel want to make any comment before I open it up to the public? Okay. All right. Since there's no more questions, I'd like to open the floor to anyone in the public who'd like to make a comment on these. Any of you brave students want to say anything?
What's it like playing on the field now? What do they call the field?
Swamp.
I do know this, because my kids played on it in soccer. It's underwater most of the time in the spring. Okay, well, thank you very much. Seeing no more comment from the public, I'm going to ask, do you have anything else?
Just a couple of things to add. This was passed by the subcommittee on a 3-0 vote. And also, some items that we looked into, because it came up during the subcommittee, was why didn't we consider going to artificial turf? That came up and you can't use CPA money for that. That was one. And I applaud the design they did. While there's going to be no lights there currently, I guess we are going to at least have conduit buried under the center of the field. So if at some point in the future, there's funding for lighting, at least the conduit and stuff will be in place, correct, Mr. Hogan, I guess?
That's correct. Excellent, excellent. Anything else?
One other thing that came up during the finance subcommittee was, it had been important to me, that we use CPA funds to leverage additional state or other federal grants, grants of any sort, foundation grants. And in fact, it impressed me that I was told that the group had looked into obtaining other grants, and there was nothing else available. So that search had been done.
Thank you. Along those lines, I'm personally happy to see the amount of effort done by the Friends of Football beyond just cash effort. The effort to make that field not only playable now, when it's a swamp, but also to make it really convenient and very nice for the people to watch games. And we'll make it good for playing football as well. Any other comment before I ask for a motion or questions of any official? Counselor?
I just want to commend particularly the team for coming out. I know this is a really good opportunity for the community to see that you're involved in the wider community. And I have certainly seen many people coming by my house, asked, not as a city councillor, but just as a member of the community with your fundraisers and different, different news about the football. And I really haven't heard tonight, but I think it can't be underscored enough, that there's a real safety issue here. If the field is wet, we certainly, that there are long-term costs associated with that for both the city and for the players. So I'm really happy to see us moving forward.
Mayor Cager?
Just one little plug. I don't know if you remember it, Amy, but the Friends for Football, the, what you're selling for the $25, how they come out and put it in your driveway, excuse me?
Our driveway?
Yes, the driveway E's. I've ordered one. So it's, you know, they're really nice to look at, and it's a great fundraiser. So you've done so many.
If you painted on the driveway, go to easthamptonyouthfootball.org.
They're really nice.
There's a word for it.
It's really creative.
It's the big E. So it's a nice way to support. It's actually nice to have anyway, but it's one of the, one of the many fundraisers that you've done. And you can tell them where they can get their forms.
Yes, easthamptonyouthfootball.org.
Since nobody heard that, we'll repeat it.
East Hampton.
They are running a fundraiser, those in the community, which is painting a large E on your driveway in support of the Eagles. And you could get it at easthampton.org.
Easthamptonyouthfootball.org.
Easthamptonyouthfootball.org.
And how long does it take before I get mine? Like, two weeks?
Yeah.
Because there's an order, there's actually an order form.
There's three of us that paint, so we're doing our best.
Right.
Okay. Anything else before? Counselor Winnie?
Yeah, if anybody wants to see a sample, I think they did one in front of the fire station. I saw it the other, last night.
Excellent.
I was wondering what it was. It was like, oh, okay, that's interesting.
Should be a little football in it.
So, there you go.
But if soccer players can get it, baseball players can get it, if you wanted to get one.
Any other comments or questions before I ask for a motion? Seeing none. Counselor Hagan?
Yeah, I'll make the following motion, that the East Hampton City Council approve the supplemental appropriation, the amount of $279,508 from CPA undesignated and appropriated to the White Brook Middle School in that amount, and that it be used for construction of a new football field at White Brook Middle School.
Second.
We have a second for supplemental appropriation of $279,508 to fund construction of a new football field at White Brook Middle School. Any discussion amongst the councilors? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining. Motion carries. Thank you. Counselor Hagan, you're up.
Our second public hearing tonight, $6,000, is a, and I'll do a second reading. This is an interdepartmental transfer dated July 29th, 2014. The request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested, $6,000, to be transferred from the reserve fund and transferred to the treasurer's professional services. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to cover the cost of real estate appraisal and survey of the Parsons Street School property.
Second.
This is the second.
So we made a second reading. Do you want to discuss it first?
Just a quick thing, and then I'll, I guess I'll ask either the mayor or the treasurer to come up, or the finance director to come up. As a result of our last meeting, where the city council approved the sale of Parsons Street School, this would be the next logical step. They have to pay to actually get a professional assessment and survey. And this is the request for that money. I don't know if the mayor has anything or the finance director to add to that, or?
I don't really have anything to add. I did get several quotes for both things. And depending on, you know, obviously, we're going with the lowest bid, so it is just enough money. But it actually, I thought I was padding it a little and it wasn't. So, but I am, I am going to meet with them after the meeting and start moving that stuff forward.
And so the councilors know this is necessary, because we are splitting the property, so we have to resurvey it, correct?
Yeah, so you have to resurvey it to?
And a new appraisal.
And, well, you have to resurvey it so that we can record the two separate deeds at the registry.
Okay.
And then we also have to get a new appraisal, because what it's assessed at currently is the whole property as it stands right now, also prior to the zoning change, which changes the value of the property as well.
Counselor Winnie?
When the property does get sold, will we be taking this $6,000 and putting it back into reserve from any of the sale of the property?
No, this is a general fund expenditure for, it's, sale of property can't be put into the reserve.
Right. Not even the expenses of selling the property can't be?
Not on my aware of. This is just, you know, this like recording of the deeds and appraisals, professional services. This is not a capital expenditure.
Right.
I think what she means, Counselor Winnie, if I might, is that we have to use the sale of property proceeds only for capital.
I know what she meant. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for? Thank you.
Yeah, again.
Anybody from the public who would like to speak to this issue? Thank you.
Again, the only additional item I have is, again, this was a 3-0 vote, the subcommittee for approval. subcommittee, for approval. Again, because I think we saw the necessity. If we're gonna sell the property, we have to do the appraisal and the survey.
So we'll have a motion, please.
I'll make the following motion that the East Hampton City Council approved the following interdepartmental transfer in appropriation of $6,000 from the reserve fund to the treasurer's professional services to cover the cost of real estate appraisal and survey of the Parsons Street School property.
Second, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a $6,000 reserve fund transfer to cover the cost of a real estate appraisal and survey of the Parsons Street School property. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining? Thank you. Motion carries. Councilor Hagan, one more?
Our final public hearing tonight is an interdepartmental transfer, and I'll do a second reading, dated July 30th, 2014. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. The amount requested is $26,300, and is to be transferred from the reserve fund, $26,300, and transferred to the highway repair and maintenance. The amount requested be used for the following purpose: to fund repairs to a John Deere loader. This is also a three-zero approval by the city council subcommittee, finance subcommittee. We did ask a lot of questions because it's a lot of money for a rather old loader. A lot of this work is, the body on it is so bad that it's actually rusting. And, but it is currently undergoing some other repairs, and the feeling was, as long as it's there, we should do this. As the cost for a new loader of this type would be approximately $160,000. And they do estimate, or the DPW does estimate, if this work's done, that it should go at least five years and hopefully up to 10 years more. So we felt it was money well spent. And again, I don't know if the mayor or the wants to-
And I think we went over this one really explicitly. This is getting back into maintaining our vehicles. And as you see in the figures, it'd be $160,000 for a new vehicle. But it's already there for other repairs, so we figure, well, it's there. You also know that last winter, we had some machinery down and ended up having to rent, do rentals. So this is a matter of trying to maintain our fleet, instead of letting it completely crumble to the ground and then have to purchase new. So this is something that we've been working on with our highway, our highway crew and the mechanics there.
Any questions for the mayor? Any questions for Councilor Hagan? Any comment from the public on this issue? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Sure. I'll make the following motion that the East Hampton City Council approved an interdepartmental transfer in the amount of $26,300. It'd be transferred from the reserve fund and transferred to the highway repair and maintenance fund to fund repairs to a John Deere loader.
Second. Your motion for a $26,300 reserve fund transfer? Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Thank you very much. I'll have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Excuse me. I apologize. Councilor Hayes, Willow Circle, I guess you want to continue?
Yeah, I'd like to continue it to our October 15th meeting, please.
Could you explain?
Yep, absolutely. I received a letter from Amanda Kemp, who's the attorney for Bernie Goll regarding this, and it stated that he had ordered a fence for the end of that road, and it hasn't come in yet. So they are hopeful. He indicated that it was ordered shortly after he received the memorandum with the specifications set forth by Jim Gracia. Mr. Goll informed me that the barrier required a special order, and he's still not received it. He's asking for a continuation on this matter until your first meeting in October. I'm actually gonna make it for the second meeting in October, just in case.
Okay, then, would you please make that motion?
So I would like to make a motion to continue the acceptance of Willow Circle and Autumn Drive to October 15th-
Second.
-2014.
We have a motion on the floor to continue the public hearing for the acceptance of Willow Circle and Autumn Drive to October 15th this year. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Before I close the public hearing, I'm just wondering, does that mean you pulled it off the agenda?
Yeah, I will. Put it back on.
I'll have a motion to close the public hearings, please.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearings. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? If there's not any more business that the councilors want to bring to the council, I will ask for a-
So moved.
Hold on. I would like a motion to allow this gentleman to speak and to reopen public speak time.
I shall move.
We have a motion to reopen public speak time. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sir? You can come to the, please state your name for the record.
My name is Joseph. Hold on. My name is Joseph Ferck. I live on 50 Line Street in East Hampton, Mass. And I would ask the people I'm addressing to bear with me, because I have a slight anxiety disorder from being a combat veteran. I come before the city council today, this evening, to make the city council aware, and I do also realize that some of my comments and questions are better directed to the DPW at their next meeting. However, the gist of why I'm here, and I'll just pass this along, if you can take a look, is on last Thursday, in front of, on 50 Line Street from Strong Avenue on up, we had a I found fault with one of several things. One, that there was no public notification of this paving to be done. And two, there was total lack of communication between the DPW and the public. This is a new type of paving. It's not a regular blacktop paving. It's like a bituminous oil base with trap rock. And in the process of doing this type of paving, which I'm told is considerably less than regular blacktop, is why they went to this, which I can understand. It involved constant compacting and sweeping, which I fully understand too. I worked on construction. However, with the sweeping came an undesirable byproduct of having a lot of this loose trap rock kicked up into the sidewalk and approximately a foot in the, in my yard. Now, this is an oil-based product. Once it rains, that oil's gonna seep into my lawn. And for those of you know me, I am very, very particular about my lawn. Okay? Better homes and gardens. When I went to talk to the supervisor for the paving company, I asked him who was gonna clean up this mess? And he said that he assumed the city was going to. And I said, "Well, you know what happens when you hyphenate assume?" And I called the DPW. Joe was out. The second-in-command Patty was out. And the third person that was there was, I believe, a person by the name of Lori or Laura. And she's the secretary. She did her best to answer my questions. I don't understand why the DPW did not have somebody out there working in conjunction with the contractor, making sure that whatever obligation they had with the city was being fulfilled. That would have certainly expedited my having to clean up this mess. I don't, I feel, you know, as a taxpayer, and as a general contractor comes through the area, it's not up to the homeowners to clean up after them. I pay enough in taxes. But I did. Not for, only, not only for aesthetic purposes, but so as not to have any ill effects to the lawn or the green belt that I put in, which is on city property for aesthetic purposes. No, I just, I just found the whole thing, and a lot of my neighbors were quite upset. The traffic that was going, was able to flow until this new product was really compacted. I mean, this stuff was kicking up like no tomorrow, and hitting the underside of the vehicles and, you know, the outside of the vehicles, especially with the newer vehicles. I got it off my driveway because I just installed the $10,000 driveway. That loose trap rock would, my running over it was gonna embed into it. This could have all been simply avoided. And I'd like to, you know, ask the city council here, and I certainly will go to the DPW meeting, and ask why nobody, who's accountable for this? Why wasn't there somebody from the highway department there representing the best interests of the city in respect to this? The other question I have for the DPW is, with this new type of roadway, is this gonna hold up to winter plowing? You know? I mean, it may be cost-effective, it may not. Who makes those decisions? Okay, whatever, you know? As far as I'm concerned, Line Street was in pretty good shape. I can name you a half a dozen, dozen different streets that needed it more so than that. Now, if there was a structural reason, fine. I mean, it's all compacted now. I think it's a good way for the city to go versus regular blacktoping. If there's a significant savings. However, I don't think it's in the best interests of the city to let subcontractors or contractors, you know, just let loose to do as they want. Somebody should be held accountable for this.
Okay, Joe.
Okay, that's it.
You've made your piece, and I want to let the councilors know that Joe and I had a long discussion, because I am his counselor in the district. Joe, I wanted to ask you, we, I left it that you might, if we don't, do we know whether this is Southampton doing this work or not? Have you found any-
No, I haven't.
Because Line Street being, I'd like the mayor to, if you could come to the podium and answer the question whether this was an East Hampton project or a Southampton project.
I'd be happy to. I have a lot of information on that. You also called my office. The calls came in Thursday very late, because I was at a legislative meeting at 4:30, and that's when the calls came in. So that probably added to a little bit of the confusion, because our crews, the highway crews, as you know, they leave at 3:30. This is an East Hampton project, and this is a new project that, another way for us, the Board of Public Works is very happy about this decision. This is a way for them to maintain the roads. As you know, you can't always repave all the roads, but this is a maintenance issue. And Jim, the highway supervisor, was right on top of this situation. As a matter of fact, I got the message when, at my meeting, and we contacted the highway supervisor right away, even though he was, you know, had already left for the day because it was late. And he got right on it, and he, what he explained is, they're not done. It was the first day that they were doing this. So they were, you know, gonna be back, and they were gonna clean up, as they continued to do that day. The crews hadn't even left that day. It's contractors, our crews have been out there. I actually rode on there today, as I'm sure many of you have. And, like I said, this is a different project. This is a project to start maintaining our roads, the same way we're trying to maintain our fleet, instead of waiting for the roads that are, you know, fill them in with potholes and need to be completely repaved. But there is a lot of information, I can guarantee you, that our crews were there two days before prepping the site, our highway crew. And Jim has been there, our highway supervisor, every day since then. And he's explained, sometimes some of the little, for lack of a better word, gravelly parts get, you know, onto the grass or the sidewalk, and people, the residents, can feel free to sweep them right back, you know, toward the road. So, but they are on top of it, and they, you know, go ahead. Did you have a question for me, or?
Yeah. Is there anything in the contract that addresses the cleanup after the project?
Well, they, the contractors were there. They, the calls we got were before they even finished the project. The contracts were there, and they were cleaning up, and they were sweeping it up.
Is there anything in the contract with the subcontractors that they're supposed to leave the site in a certain condition?
I'm absolutely sure there is, and that's what they were doing. That's what I'm trying to explain to you. That's what they were doing.
All right.
But it is a different project. It is very different than what we're used to. But I think the most of the confusion came in because the calls came in very late in the day, and the contractors were not finished with the site yet.
When did they, mayor, can I ask a question? When did they finish?
I'm not sure if they're completely done, but that night, the day the calls were coming in, is what I'm trying to explain, the contractors themselves were still on site, and were still, you know, cleaning up after it, and will maintain to.
I received a call-
Right.
-that day.
Right.
And also, I went out to the site-
Right.
And I took pictures.
Yep.
And it was a mess then, it was a mess the next morning. It was a mess still on the weekend.
Well, I was there today, and I didn't look like a mess today. So, but I can tell you that-
Particularly the section between Plain Street and Phelps Street.
But I can tell you that-
The sidewalk there was just off.
The supervisor has been there every day, you know, checking the site. And, you know, it's, any type of construction, I mean, they have their signs posted, it's a construction site. That was what I was explaining earlier, you know, thank people for their patience when it goes down to one lane or no lanes. And in the middle of a construction site, it is, you know, difficult, and you have to really use your patience and go very slow through it. But it's, you know-
Obviously, I think we do-
I mean, that was the first day that they were doing it, was Thursday. And that's when we got the call. So it was Thursday and Friday, they were right in the middle of the project.
Doing a new process, and there's gonna be some growing pains. I think there's some lessons to be-
Same thing happened on Loudville and Glendale and Pomeroy. You know, when anybody is paving anything, it's a construction site. And, you know, people need to get where they need to go. So, that's what I was explaining earlier.
I want to end this discussion unless there's really, you have more? Okay.
So there's language in the contract that discusses how they should be leaving the work site?
You would probably want to stop in the DPW and look at their contracts, if you're interested in the specific language.
I'm just asking if they're compliant with that language, then that should be sufficient.
Right.
Do you feel they were compliant with the language?
I don't have the contract in front of me. Like I said, I inspected the project today. I was out there this afternoon. So, and I've been in contact with the highway supervisor. And when I know he's in charge of it and he's on it, I respect his opinions.
Anything else from councilors? I would like to suggest, Joe, that you definitely go to the Board of Public Works. I think you have legitimate complaints, especially about the residents maybe not being notified before the project, and the timeliness, as Councilor Hayes is suggesting, of being compliant with cleanup. If you were told that the city was in charge when it should have been, the contractor, et cetera. But to answer your question, the council's authority here is limited. It is the Board of Public Works or the Department of Public Works. But if you're representing a number of neighbors, as I think you are, I think you should definitely go there and get your answers from them.
I will.
And be in touch with the mayor's office. She's trying to deal with it as well, and I think she will help you understand it. But I think we are gonna learn some lessons from this, Joe. So go, go to the Board of Public Works.
I thank the city council for taking the extra time to hear me out, bear with me.
Absolutely. And so you're, anything else, Joe? Go to the podium.
No. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
And I would like to address the mayor and say that, as from my days at Smith College, that during negotiations, that we would always say that we can agree to respectfully disagree.
Okay, Joe. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Council Winnick?
No, just one suggestion.